Good evening. The October 2025 Monthly Dixon County School Board Meeting is now in session. For the record, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of three school board members. Chairman Hicks is attending the conference and cannot join us tonight. Mr. Rosnick has requested to participate electronically. Also in attendance are Tanya Baker, our school board clerk, Scott Mullins, our school board attorney, and Ms. Haiti Robinson, Division Superintendent. We would like to extend special recognition to our first student school board member, Mr. Cohen Powers. Cohen is a senior at Ridgeview High School. He was recommended by Ridgeview High School and approved by the board. Welcome, Cohen.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosnick, could you please tell us for a minute why you're not able to attend the meeting in person?
Personally, I'm...
Thank you. Board members, Mr. Rosnick has requested to join the meeting electronically. Do I have a motion to allow Mr. Rosnick to join the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Mr. Rosnick, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
This time, if we could please stand as Ridgeview High School sings the National Anthem and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. We have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or revisions to the agenda?
Mr. Hackney, the only revision that we have is that we... the discipline appeal has been removed from the close section agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved. That brings us to the public comment section of the meeting. Mr. Vanover, would you please read the guidelines for public comment? Ms. Martin, you please be the timekeeper.
A period of time for public comment will be designated on the meeting agenda during which the public may comment on issues related to public education. Dixon County School Board believes that the citizens of the county should be heard and that this is an acceptable format for receiving public comment. After the public comment section of the meeting is closed, the public shall not be allowed to participate in general board member discussions regarding agenda items. Public participation with board members regarding agenda items can be disruptive and the practice is prohibited by Robert's Rules of Order. It is the desire of the school board to treat each member of the public fairly and equally. Allowing one individual to participate while excluding others is unfair. The board may hold such public hearings as may be necessary to allow the public to more fully express their concerns, or the board may place the public comment section of any meeting at the end of the meeting to allow additional public comments. While we do not wish to restrict the free expression of opinion, we feel that certain restrictions may be necessary so that order and reasonable standards of decorum may be maintained. We ask that the following standards be adhered to. The speaker will be recognized by the chair. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Speakers will refrain from the use of vulgarity or profanity and will avoid negative or embarrassing comments directed toward specific children or students. Board members should not respond to issues presented by speakers unless clarification is needed, and matters of concern raised under public comment will be referred to the proper official for investigation and future board consideration if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Vanover. I'd like to invite Ms. Phyllis Mullins from the DEA.
Mr. Chair, I don't see her this evening.
Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Kathy Music.
I knew Kathy would be here.
Ms. Music is back.
Welcome back.
What a pleasure.
Is it on? Yes.
What a pleasure it is to be back. Lovely, beautiful day to come to Dickinson County. I enjoy my drive so much. And I'm here to... two things, I guess. The first thing I put on your... at your table is a brochure that talks about Virginia professional educators. As you've probably heard in the past, we give away grants and scholarships twice a year. I'm too tall for this. Grants and scholarships twice a year, and the fall submission date is November 15th. We are nonprofit, and twice a year, all the money's given away. So in that brochure, about the third... the third flyer back tells about that. They're easy to write. Teachers can get from $300 to $500 to attend a conference, to get manipulatives for their classroom, anything. So there's a girl in Scott County that's gotten it 17 years. She's taught 17 years. And so you've got to write them to get them. And I just... I will send it out to our members. Or Lenore, who is one of your own, that's going to be coming to represent VPE now at these meetings. Stand up, Ms. Lenore. Lenore and I go way back. As you know, she, I guess, is one of the teachers here at Ridgeview High School, and it is an honor that she will serve you because she's a great person. I've known her, I won't say how many years. It's been a few. It's been a few, but I know that she will do a great job. Also, I want to congratulate... always there's good news when you come to Dickinson County. First off, fifth in... no, sixth in fifth grade reading, those SOL scores. So that is impressive. I mean, that is really good. So congratulations in the Innovative Award for the Dickinson County. That also is something to celebrate. So again, it's good to be back. I do miss coming here. I know it's a long drive, but I do miss coming here. But I can tell that things are going well, and I leave this in good hands, too. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Music. Also, thanks to Lenore for her new role. Do we have... Do we have anyone else for public comment? That brings us to our consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes, approval of monthly invoices, revenue and expenditures, discussion of school activity funds, approval of field trips, approval of new elementary school construction invoices, the approval of construction bank reconciliation document and the Dickinson County Public Schools Health Statement Account. Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing agenda's approved, or following agenda item is for information from the school board? Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Board members, as you look at through your information for the board, the Ridgeview Choir, big hand to them, and thank you for being here. We're going to be enjoying their singing during Good News from Our Schools, so we are thrilled to hear that. We also would like to remind our board members of the VSBA Annual Conference, November the 19th through the 21st of this month... of next month, excuse me. If you are interested in going, if you'll let Ms. Tanya Baker know immediately so that she can make reservations and so on that way. So the quicker that that's done, the better that we can accommodate your needs. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any questions for Ms. Robinson? Our next agenda item is School Performance and Support Framework Process.
I think it's Good News from Our Schools, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I skipped one. Ms. Robinson, that's your item. Could you please tell us about Good News from Our Schools?
Certainly. Just want to thank you and thank everyone who's here. We have a lot of good news from our schools today, and this is really... October has always been our month to kind of focus on our children, our staff, and all of their achievements. And we're very proud this month to be able to do that. The first person that I would like to recognize is Mr. Chris Owens? We've had a change right there. Okay, so you would like for them to sing first, sir? Mr. Hackney, there's been a change right here, so we're going to have the choir. Mr. Page, would you please have your choir and you just serenade us this afternoon? Yes, absolutely. And on behalf of the board, we wish our students the best of luck this weekend. Let us know, Mr. Page, what winners we have. Mr. Page. Technology is a wonderful thing.
We'll have to put Mr. Owens in Ryan's next train, won't we?
Okay, well, thank you very much. Would you please help me to give our choir another round of applause?
There he is.
Any of our choir parents, if you're here, would you please stand and take a bow? Because you're a part of this also. I know you bring to practice and you come to these presentations, and so we want to thank you for your support. Mr. Page, we'll take a rain check next meeting. How about that? Okay? Thank you very much. Mr. Owens, is this a good time for you, sir? Thank you for trying to help. Thank you again for coming. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. So I guess any of the CTE teachers that are here, if they come up front, I would certainly appreciate it. Like I saw Ms. Sutherland...
My Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, come. Mr. Anderson, would you like to come to the front, please?
Yeah, any of the CTE teachers that are here, if they come to the front, be much appreciated. Yeah, I saw Ms. Phillips and Ms. Sutherland, Mr. Anderson. Let's see, Ms. Powers back there hiding. I think it was last... I think it was last Wednesday, they invited Dr. Neese and myself to a gala that they were having, which is a fancy word for eating dinner. But they... Ms. Sutherland's class prepared part of desserts, and I think we worked with Wise County's Culinary Arts. Well, I say "we," Ms. Sutherland worked with Wise County's Culinary Arts Program to provide the desserts for the gala. And I didn't... we didn't know really before that they were going to give Dixon County an award. But luckily, Ms. Sutherland let us know that some of us need to be there to accept an award they're giving us. So it was from the Appalachian Council for Innovation, and I'll read what they said. It was Mr. Beber. And he says, "Our first innovation award winner is being recognized for being an inspiration and taking a risk before anyone else in the region, truly the definition of being a pioneer and an innovator in the realm of education. This award winner jumped headfirst into the simulated workplace model, putting emphasis on project-based and student-led learning. They're creating and running actual businesses from the classroom and developing the skills necessary to be successful in today's workforce. By being the first school system in the region to have the courage to step out and try something new, these folks paved the way, made it easier for other school systems to see that change isn't always bad, that simulated workplace model works. It is my pleasure to present the first innovation award of the night to Dixon County Public Schools." Will all those in attendance from Dixon County please come forward? Right, so these guys have came here, and they're integral to the success of our schools. They spend a lot of time working with the kids. They have... I mean, it's amazing to watch, you know, the culinary class bring stuff, you know, for everything. Where are you going tomorrow night? Yeah, so fun to watch, right? Like, you can call over there and Mr. Anderson will get them boys to hook you up, work on their cars, right? Like, Ms. Phillips always giving haircuts, they were doing haircuts. Like, Ms. Phillips always giving haircuts, they were doing haircuts and nails and stuff for, I know they've offered it for prom, right? And then, saw some... Yeah. Yeah, so... Yeah, so it's been really good, right? It's been a really good program. I told Ms. Robinson, you know, Ms. Edwards kind of, she's definitely the brainchild behind that, and, you know, against maybe protests from some of us that that might be difficult to do, that we went ahead and did it, right? Like, and it hasn't been easy, but I think it's been really good for the students. So, if you give these guys a hand, it would... And here's the award, right? Here's the award.
Board members, Chris Owens and Ms. Edwards worked very hard on this, so...
It looks just like an Oscar.
All the students, all right, can Ms. Sutherland take that back to, why, as she said her students?
Absolutely, absolutely. That'll be fine. And now, Ms. Sutherland, the name of your group is... So, if you need some great food, Sweet Rose Catering.
Thank you.
Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you for being here this evening.
I could, like, use me go ahead and do the rest of whatever I have.
Would you mind waiting just a moment, sir?
I don't mind waiting. About good news, can I do the good news?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right.
That's what we're on now, right?
That's great, all right. So, I just had a couple other things. Mr. Anderson's going back there. We had an opportunity that we're going to try and put together, an electric or solar-powered go-kart to race over to Bristol Motor Speedway. Mr. Anderson's going to head that up. That sounds like a lot of fun. At first, when Dr. Neese asked me about it, I was like, "Nobody's going to be interested in that." But I'll send it anyways, and when I sent it out, every teacher in the building and a bunch of the kids were all excited. So, we're going to give it a shot, right? Like, we're going to give it a shot. Mr. Anderson likes to win, so hopefully the solar-powered go-kart championship is in our future, right? Like, it's in our future. Of course, the volleyball team's number two in the district, number one in the region. We play Monday, play Lehigh here, and then I would think the rest of them will be played at Avenue. We got, next week, we'll be represented at the leadership conference. We've got to go sit on a panel, answer questions about the simulated workplace. So, that's just some good news from us. Of course, the volleyball team's doing pretty good. WCYB's going to be here this week. It will be the game of the week, so they'll be on campus Friday all day. So, yeah, so there are a lot of good things going on, and I appreciate your guys' time.
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Thank you so much, Mr. Owens. Thank you. Um...
We have more good news from the school? We have a lot of good news.
Yes. Mr., I'd like to invite Diana Carter, thank you, and Mary Beth Masters to the front, please. Both of these ladies are from Wise County, and they are heading up the Lunchbox 276. And they're here to tell you and tell us about this exciting program. So, ladies, thank you so much for being here this evening and being a part of our school board meeting. It's a pleasure.
Thank you for having us. As Heidi had mentioned, my name is Diana James, and I'm the expansive coordinator for Lunchbox 276. And we are very proud to now be in Dickinson County schools. So, when this program started about 13 years ago, we were just in Wise Primary, and it has grown to now be a 501(c)(3), so we're a fully funded nonprofit organization as of 2017. But this year, we took on the expansion portion. We were awarded a grant through the Virginia DHCD to actually sustain that expansion for the next three years. So, we started in Dickinson County Public Schools the first week in October. So, this week, this Friday, will be our fourth week in the public schools in Dickinson County. We work directly with our teachers and guidance counselors, administration, for each of these schools to ensure that the correct amount of kids receive bags every week. There's 1,100 bags total that we do weekly in our program. That is over Wise County, Dickinson County, and the city of Norton. But specifically for Dickinson County, we're providing 250 bags every week. So, 150 goes to elementary, and then 50 each to the middle school and the high schools. And of course, you guys know right now about November and the benefits being halted for SNAP. So, this is a very critical time for us to get in front of the community and let them know that not only do we accept volunteers, but we also accept donations of any kind, whether that be through PayPal, Venmo, Cash App, or even just a check. Any little bit helps us be able to provide additional meals to these kids, especially during this November month that is so uncertain for these families. Not just the beginning of November, but we also have the week of Thanksgiving that these kids are going to be out of school. So, anything additional that we could provide in these bags is going to be, is going to be just substantial to their education. So, when they come back from Thanksgiving break, our goal is to make sure that, obviously, no kid has went hungry over that time period, so that they can get their education, like, so that they're not, you know, of course, when they're hungry, they don't focus. So, we want them to have the same ability as any other child that's in the classroom with them that may not have the challenges that they're facing. So, yeah, that's all I got.
Yes, James, thank you.
Thank you all so much for what you do.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Mary Beth, would you like to, Mary Beth Masters is the person that...
Thank you so much for letting us be here tonight and for letting us provide weekend food bags for Dickinson County schools. Like Diana said, I've been with Lunchbox 276. This is going on our 13th year. We started very small at Wise Primary School, but our program has grown, and like she said, we're actually doing 1,141 bags. And anytime that you all would love, we would love to have you all come over and participate. We'd love to have you all come over and pack bags, visit our facility. We're located on the Wise County Schools campus. We're right across from Duds and Doe, and anytime that you all would like to come, we would love for you to come and pack bags with us.
Thank you for that.
Thank you so much, Ms. James. Thank you, Mary Beth. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Please tell me we have more good news.
Excuse me, more good news, yes.
Okay.
I'd like to invite our principals, our administrators, they're here today, and they're going to be sharing with us about Bullying Prevention Month in the Dixon County Public Schools. So, I'd like to ask Dr. Compton if you'll come, please.
Good evening. I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation here. We'll just go over a little bit about kind of what we're doing in the school there at the elementary school this month. As it comes up there, October is, it's Bully Prevention Month, as Ms. Robinson mentioned, it's also Red Ribbon Week. And so, we have kind of combined those things throughout the month. And our theme this year has been "Life is a Puzzle, Solve It Drug-Free." Go onto the next slide, please. Red Ribbon Week, I mentioned that, is October 23rd through the 31st. And Red Ribbon Week is, of course, drug prevention. And with that, we thought it would be good to do some different things throughout the school and different themes. So, our teachers decorated doors, and our kids decorated doors. And the theme of those went along with that. They could either be bully prevention, or they could be being drug-free. Next, please. Our, Ms. Mullins, our art teacher, worked with all of our students, and they made pledges. As you could see there, they used their hands in art class, and they put together a puzzle of all the different classes, pledging to be both against bullying and drug-free throughout their lives. So, we were pleased with that. The kids had a good time doing that, and we'd like to thank Ms. Mullins, our art teacher. She's an excellent art teacher. She's always got very good ideas, comes up with good ways for our kids to be involved. And they had, as you could see, especially our very young ones, our pre-K3 kids, they had a really fun time in the paint there. We had our, doors were completed by October the 10th. The two winters, we had one upstairs, that was Ms. Haley Mullins's room. She's a third-grade teacher. And then downstairs, kindergarten, was Ms. Dusty Oaklin's room. We'll see some pictures of their doors later on. Ms. Dusty's Oaklin's room was a huge spider web that went along with, of course, Halloween as well. But the winning classes received a popcorn party that was sponsored by Prevention. They got involved with us, and then the drinks for the party was sponsored by communities and schools. And we would like to thank them both for helping us with that. We'll go through these next slides very quickly, because that just kind of gives you an idea of what we're doing each day. We're going to wear different colors each day, beginning today. Today was orange, if you want to go to the next one, please. And that was specifically geared at bully prevention tomorrow. We will be doing yellow for kindness. Friday is, of course, our Werewolf Pack Colors for Unity Day. That's always our Spirit Friday anyway, so everyone participate in that. The following Monday is Wear Green for International Dwarfism Awareness Day. Tuesday is White for Peace. Wednesday is Wear Red to Say No to Drugs, and that goes along with our red ribbon. Thursday's Wear Blue for Empathy and Compassion. And then, of course, on Friday of next week, it's a big day at the elementary school, that is Halloween. And so, we will be dressing up on Friday in our Halloween costumes. We have a big event going on as well for the kids. That's Friday. And then, the best way, I thought, for you all to kind of see what we're doing is through, based on what our, is by having our kids kind of show you what's going on. So, that should be the last slide. So, we're going to push that out. That'll go, you all got to see the first preview of that. That'll go out to our students tomorrow in all their classes. And we're very proud of our students and what they're doing to squash bullying at RES, and our teachers as well. And I'd also like to thank Elizabeth Wallace and Kayla Robinson, that I have all these big ideas, and then they make them happen. So, I say, "This is what I think we should do," and then they figure it out. So, I'd like to thank them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Compton.
Mr. Whitner, Ridgeview Middle School?
Good evening. I don't know how I taught that, so... But there are good things happening at Ridgeview Middle School. And of course, for we, for October Bullying Prevention Month, we're continuing to focus on the different aspects of bullying. Each week, a video is shown, just like we did last year with a discussion with the class periods, with topics like, "What is bullying? And where does bullying take place?" This week, we've been focusing, "Why does bullying happen?" And next week, "Who can stop bullying?" We're wearing blue on Mondays, just to continue to encourage that awareness. And something new that I've been doing this year is what I'm calling a motivational minute. At the last part of the morning announcements, I'm actually including some comments myself. And I don't think I've put anybody to sleep yet. We haven't checked that. But our mission, we, at Ridgeview Middle School, is "Learn today, lead tomorrow." So, each morning, I'm reinforcing that mission and encouraging students to set goals, to learn everything they can that day, so that they'll be successful and good leaders tomorrow. I want the students to hear directly from me that I believe in them, and I also share personal ideas and stories that will help them learn today how to lead tomorrow. So, I'm constantly reinforcing that thing before and at the end. Now, during this month, following up in that, what I've been doing is focusing, identifying bullying, sharing why it is wrong, and providing ways that students can help prevent it. And of course, I've had to do some research, so I can turn around and tell them things to help. And so, some of the research that I found out is 28% of youth, young people nationwide between sixth and 12th grades, experience some form of bullying. Not only that, higher rates across the country occur in the middle schools compared to the elementary and the high schools. So, as our future leaders, I've been asking our students to help us prevent bullying at Ridgeview Middle School. During that morning minute, I've talked about the need to tell a trusted adult, if someone's being bullied, that reporting is not snitching, but it is doing the right thing. Students have been asked to examine themselves to make sure they're not acting like a bully. On Monday, I said this, "Ask yourself, do you care about other people, or do you just care about yourself? Are you kind to others, and are you trying to help others? Trying to understand others and help them is an important way of making sure you are part of the solution and not part of the problem." So, one day, just to check to see, this was last month, make sure the students were listening, I talked about, "Is your glass half-full, or is it half-empty?" And I gave a couple of examples of that. And I said, "Tomorrow morning, when you come in, I want you to tell me, is your cup half-full, or is it half-empty? And/or is it all full?" Because I said, "Scientists will tell you the whole thing is full, half-full of water and half-full of air." So, I went and gave some examples on... So I went and gave some examples along that line. And the next morning, I kept a tally. The half-fulls won, okay? Their glasses were half-full, but they're quite a full of half-empties. And there's a few that said, my full, my glass is completely full. So it was a nice poll to see if people were paying attention. They are. But what I did this month, I said now, because I shared a lot of ideas. Michael Phelps was someone who was bullied, so I shared a story about him and some others. And then some poems from other people. Then I asked them one day earlier, a couple of weeks ago, I said, I want you to share poems, and your ideas to help me as I'm working on these thoughts. So try to get some input. So I'm going to share two poems with you. The first one, and they speak from the heart. And so this first one, three sixth graders came up and they gave this, and here's what it says. Sometimes a bully could be misunderstood. We would help to stop it if we could. They could be mad or sad inside. Their feelings might be like a roller coaster ride. When they bully you, it is no fun. It makes you feel the need to run. When they bully you, you may cry, cry, cry. But they may deny, deny, deny. And then one seventh grader wrote this poem. Bullying is harsh. Bullying is cruel. So please don't do it too. Bullying hurts like a deep wound. The wound grows deeper every word you say, and one day, it might not go away. The wounds hurt, but they stay night and day. And we beg and we plead that they will go away. So if you're a bully, please stop today because the words you say might not go away. And a little, at the end of one of my morning messages, I'm not a poet, but it, the words kind of rhyme. So I said, the better each of you support each other, the better leaders you will be. The more positive leaders we have at Ridgeview Middle School, the less bullying we will see. So the whole idea is to focus on being successful students, we believe will be successful. We're talking about what you need to be successful, the challenges. And that's what I've told this month. One of the challenges you'll find all through life are bullies are everywhere. And so as you learn how to meet those challenges, whether it's reporting, whether it's helping your friend, whatever this, and there's several steps we've gone through, you're helping build those skills to make you a better leader tomorrow. So thank you for your support and helping us support our students. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Whitner.
And Mr. Owens?
In full disclosure, I was aware that there was going to be a PowerPoint presentation this time, but I did not get one done, so. This time I knew, right? Like I knew it was a possibility and I didn't get it done, so. But, so this, like we was doing our, we've been doing our activities this week for Bullying Prevention Month. And we started out Monday with a pledge that, you know, I had students sign. I've been trying to do it, me and Dr. Muncie and Mr. Owens have been trying to do these things during lunch so we can talk to the kids like individually, like at each lunch table. So we got a little bit of time in there, so. You know, I had them sign a pledge that they wouldn't bully. And I'm going to take and put those up on a wall. And then on Tuesday, we did kindness cards. And when I was passing them out, and they're anonymous, so you give the cards out, you're like, write something nice or something kind. It could be to somebody or it could just be a general statement. And of course, I got high school kids, so I was like, they're like, you just go put them up on the board? I was like, well, after I read them all and make sure, you know, what they all say, I'll put them up on the board. But I learned something that anonymously, they write really nice stuff about each other on a card, right? Like anonymously. So I don't know, I thought that was kind of, it was kind of interesting. I didn't have any that I wouldn't put on the board, which I thought was, I figured for sure, you know, when you ask teenage students sometimes to write, like you don't know what you're going to get. But I was pleasantly surprised that they were really kind. And I'll put them all if I didn't find anything on there that I wouldn't. I asked the teachers, I sent a video to teachers to have them to play it. It's five, six minutes long about cyberbullying, what it does to people and what it looks like. And I asked the teachers to share that with the kids. Today, we did the, I asked the teachers to send me names of people that they saw doing something kind, either for a teacher or for another student or something, right? Like anytime, because I make lots of phone calls about students that are, you know, behavior issues. It's nice to make a phone call, say, hey, you know, I got to report today that your kid did something really nice for someone else, right? And I've got certificates and I'm going to give those out and I'll take pictures when we do that. I'm probably going to continue that, probably until, I think, till Christmas time. I just say, if you catch somebody doing something nice, I want to know, right? Like I want to know if kids are being good to each other. It's really good to hear. So I'm probably, I'm probably going to keep, probably going to keep doing that. Tomorrow, we have the Narcan Training and the Fentanyl Awareness, so we'll be doing that tomorrow. The English classes, I've asked English teachers to have the kids write a poem or something about kindness anonymously. They're going to turn them in. I guess the teachers know who they are, but I don't want to know the names. I don't have them put up on the wall. And then also during lunch, I'm going to go around and ask students to, you know, if they've been bullied, how's it make them feel, right? Like a walk in my shoes type thing. So like if the kids are just writing anonymous, right? Like I don't want, just so they can, just so you can get it out there, right? And I can, all this stuff, I'm going to post on the wall. And I had an idea that, like maybe I could post all that stuff and make it look like our logo. And I asked a student today if he would do that for us, and he said he would. So once I collect all that stuff up, my plan is to have a logo, like it'll be all these cards and stuff that we've made, and we'll have it up. And I'll take a picture and give me the kids I can there. And then tomorrow, or Friday, my plan is, okay, Mr. Whitner, give me thumbs up. All right. So the plan is Friday, I'm going to disrupt the entire campus and I asked Mr. Whitner and Mr. Compton if we could get all the kids out. I'm trying to do it on the football field if Ms. Van Dyck tells me that it's possible. I'm going to have all the kids on the football field. And the elementary school kids will make an O, and the middle school kids will make an N, then the high school kids will make an E, so it'll say one. And I'll take a drone, I'll, I'm going to take a video and picture of all the kids. If I can get them all on the football field, I don't know, it's 1,700 kids if everybody's here. So if we can't, we'll do it on the practice field. But the plan is to have that done out on the football field. And I don't know, the program caused a mess because WCYB is going to be there trying to set their stuff up, but we'll just see. We'll see how it goes. You never know till you try. So that's what we're up to. And I'll get you guys a copy of the video and the picture. I'm trying to do like maybe like one, and I'll digitally edit and I can put like one pack or something like that. I like to make it like a really, like a really nice picture. So that's our plan, and that's what we've, that's what we've been up to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Owens.
I just want to take a few minutes to just really thank all of our administrators, and they've worked really hard and their plates are full. And then when I come and say, oh, by the way, one more thing, they really just rise up to the occasion. One more thing that I just want to mention, and Dr. Compton, I know you and the other principals are working on a special Halloween event. And would one of you like to tell us about that or about that, please? This year, Halloween is during a school day, so that brings other fun to the day.
Right, so. Yeah, and I wanted to mention too, I was glad you called us back up here. I forgot to mention, and Ms. Kraft and Ms. Pressley, our guidance counselors, helped us in planning everything, and I wanted to give them that credit. But for Halloween, we have planned, it started out with another big idea and just see what we could do with it. But we thought it would be nice, of course, to have all of the kids at the elementary school be able to trick or treat on campus. And so we kind of started kind of putting that together and kind of what that was, kind of what we thought that was going to look like. And the first thing I did was call Mr. Owens and, well, first I called Ms. Robinson, and then I called Mr. Owens after she said she thought it was a good idea. And I said, hey, this is going to be a good way for your attendance, help your attendance at the high school because we'll get the clubs involved. But long story short, between, in the morning hours on Halloween, all of our kids at the elementary school will be going down the long sidewalk if it's a nice day. I think we're up to 37 organizations, clubs, and businesses now who are going to come and line up and the kids will be able to trick or treat. And the high school kids will be also helping hand out the candy and helping us get everything organized. And we're going to kind of, we kind of piggybacked on our, some of the other organizations and clubs that kind of do this already, but we're going to be able to do it for the whole elementary school this year as well. So it's going to be a big project, but we're looking forward to it, and we think it'll be a great way, not only to help attendance, but to help some of our kids maybe who don't have the opportunity to get out and trick or treat.
And board members, just in case you don't get it, but there's a lot of competition in attendance between the three schools, and we have to separate them sometimes during the administrative meeting to do that, so. But a very special thanks to you for that. The last item that I have, and we're going to wait on the SOL celebration, but Ms. Deal, you have something great to report to us about a, an application that you told us about last month. So if you would, and then we'll finish with Ms. Martin.
Good evening. I don't think I can top all of that, but I do have more good news. As Ms. Robinson said last month, we asked the board's approval to submit a proposal for an alternative route program partnership with the company I teach. And this alternative route would enable our school division to hire provisionally licensed teachers faster and easier in times, especially when we can't find an appropriate or licensed candidate for a particular position. The partnership would also help our community members who want to become teachers by providing them a clear and fast and affordable route to teacher licensure. So I'm happy to report that last week, we were informed that our proposal request was approved by the VDOE. I'll just read just a little bit of the letter that says Dickinson County Public Schools' Alternative Route Program will provide provisionally licensed teachers with job-embedded support and mentorship to help them to earn full licensure. I commend you and your staff for expanding opportunities for teachers to earn credentials and to advance in their careers. That's from Brian Jackson, the director of the Department of Lossinger. So I will be meeting with representatives from I Teach on November 7th to discuss the next steps in initiating this program and getting it working for us. As we move along in the process, I'll be working with I Teach representatives and with Brian Jackson, the director of Lossinger at the VDOE, to recruit and educate and hire future teachers.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Hackney, one more thing, because I'm sure I'll hear about it tomorrow. I asked Mr. Compton if he had anything else to say. Mr. Owens, do you have anything else to say, sir? Okay, I just want to make sure. And Mr. Whitner, you're okay. Thank you. Just wanted to make certain. And that concludes our good news. Oh, except for Ms. Martin. Ms. Martin, come on. Come on, Ms. Martin.
She's perplexed. What is it?
No, you're next. You're next on the, on the good news.
Yeah, I guess I am.
Yes, yes.
You're on two times.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought we were talking about my grant. Okay. You've completely lost me here. It's been a long day. One thing I wanted to mention that we forgot to mention earlier is in your packet, you do have a copy of our climate survey from last year. Good report. It was, the middle school did it last year, and we just put you a copy in there just for your review. So mine is a little good news, bad news, but it's overall, it's really good news. So the attendance for, this is for September, your packet does include the attendance percentages, the comparison that we do for the last five years, entry and withdrawals. You have an attendance picture that I do for you. And then the, this month, you have the attendance committees, like a summary. For this month, or for September, we do show a decrease of five students from last month. We show in K through 12, we had 665 students. In the pre-K, postgraduate, we had 62 students. And then 16 students in the three-year-old program. That's a total of 1,743 students. For our monthly attendance percentage for September, Ridgeview Elementary School, once again, won the banner and the championship belt, or WD, I told you I call it the WWE belt, 93.6%. The middle school is at 93.32%. I had to run that report. I ran it on a Monday. I had to run it on Wednesday and on Friday because they wanted me to run it to make sure. And then the high school was at 91.29. So seeing all three schools were in the 91%, 90% or above. And just to make sure, and I'll point this out, that's two months in a row for the elementary school. And if you think they're not keeping count, they are keeping count. And we love the fact that they're that competitive because what that means is our kids are benefiting because the principals are competitive, so they're pushing the kids to be competitive to come to school. Chronic absenteeism is a little hard to do this, this early in the year. If school ended in September, we look horrible, okay? And it's just a numbers game. Elementary school's at 23% for chronic absenteeism. The middle school's at 29%. The high school's at 34%. Hopefully COVID doesn't break out and we end school in September. I'm knocking on wood there. But if we finish the school at 180 days, we look great right now. Elementary school's at .003%. The middle school is at 0%. They have one student that's missed 18 days right now, and that's, actually, that student even wouldn't count because they're on the homebound. And then the high school's at 2%. So we're looking good chronic-wise, and we're just continuing to keep on top of that. The attendance coordinator is keeping on top of that. The schools are keeping on top of it. It's just, it's a hard thing to keep on top of, but they're working really hard. The attendance committees, some of the ideas that they've shared with me that they're looking at, I think the middle school had talked about doing houses, sort of like Harry Potter. I'm not a Harry Potter fan, so I'm not real familiar with that, but to do competitions within the school, pizza parties, extra recess, dance parties, field trips. Of course, we'll continue to do our billboards, video game, game days, drink stations, popcorn stations, many, many, many more ideas. You know, kids love the competition. You can tell our principals love the competition. And again, who benefits from that is the kids benefit from that. And when the kids benefit, that's what we're looking for. And at this point, I'll ask if you have any questions about attendance.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
Mr. Hackney, I just have one more thing that while our principals are here, and they're aware of this, and we compared chronic absenteeism last year, 24-25, with the year prior. And Ridgeview High School chronic absenteeism for the 24-25 compared to the year before, compared last year, it was 31.4% compared to 48.07% the prior year. So you can see what a, what a gain they have made. Ridgeview Middle School chronic absenteeism was last year 28.7% compared to the prior year, 42.56%. And Ridgeview Elementary School absenteeism last year was 28.35% compared to 36.36%. So we can't teach them unless they're there, but you see our So we can't teach them unless they're there, but you see how hard our schools, our staff, and everyone has worked. So a special thanks and gratitude to everyone. Thank you.
All right, if that concludes the good news from our schools, the next agenda item is School Performance and Support Framework Process, Virginia's New Accountability Process Update. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you, sir. And this item will be very short in summary. We still have not received anything from the Virginia Department of Education with either the preliminary data and definitely not the, any kind of data that we can publicly release. Our principals and our staff have been working very hard on this. And so we hope that soon we'll be able to publicly release all of that information. I've shared that information with you as board members, but we're still working through that. The state is still working through that. So hopefully perhaps in December, I'm looking for that we'll have some. I can tell you that one school is, it appears is in the distinguished and the other two appear to be on track. And so we're very proud of those schools, those staff members, those administrative staff. So when we have more information, solid information, we'll be glad to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Robinson? That brings us to our next agenda item of discussion of cut scores and its impact on SOL tests. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Cut scores, of course, in SOL tests are the minimum score that a student has to make to pass the test or to be proficient. For many, many years, that score has been 400. And the Virginia Department, the Virginia Board of Education has approved increasing those scores. So this will impact our SOL scores. We don't know how, we don't know when, but all of us are very aware of that and know that that's coming. We know that this, they were supposed to vote on the cut scores today and we received information from the Virginia Department of Education that the cut scores will not, now not be addressed until November. So it makes it very difficult to plan. We're planning in the dark. But regardless, we are aware that the cut scores will be increasing. That will be a communication issue for our students, our staff, and our parents to know that what is passing this year may not be passing next year. And so again, we'll hear more about that as it becomes available. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions from the board? Given that, brings us to the next agenda item of Dickinson County Public Schools Awarded Security Grant. Ms. Martin?
Could have put this in our good news. With sincerest gratitude, I'd like to announce, or we would like to announce, that once again, Dickinson County Public Schools was awarded $112,526,000 from VDOE Security Equipment Grant. This grant does require a 25% match from the school district. We also received a surprise and exciting email last Thursday that awarded us an additional $22,824,000 from last year's security grant. That one will also require a 25% match. Both funds can only be used for the middle school and high school. As one of the parameters of the, of these grants is that the school must be in existence for five years or more. With these funds, I'd like to share with you what we intend to, to purchase. We will pay off the remaining four years of the synergics contract that's our panic buttons. We'll be purchasing additional bus camera equipment, purchasing additional handheld radios for our staff, purchasing additional security cameras on, for the campus. And we're also going to be purchasing new security door locks for the middle school and high school. We're looking into another source to purchase door locks for the elementary school. What these door locks are is they would, they would mount on the inside of the doors. And so instead of having to fumble and look for your key to lock the door should we be in a lockdown, you just push a button and it locks the doors. They are, the fire marshal, they are fire marshal approved. And then to unlock the door, you just hit the handle and it unlocks them. So that way, you know, we're in lockdown, instead of a teacher panicking and having to worry about hunting for a key, or there's a substitute, or there's a, you know, the teacher's gone to the bathroom and the aide's watching the classroom and doesn't have a key, you just push a button and it locks the door. So we're in the process of, the representatives coming out next week to show Terry and his staff how to install them. And we're in the process of getting that taken care of, hopefully in the next little bit. Any, any questions on the security grant? Or grants?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Martin. That brings us to board comment. Mr. Asnik, if you can hear me well, would you like to make any board comment?
Well, it sounds like we've had all for good things happen. I hope our kids are taking advantage of it. Those presentations were quite, I hope, you know, a lot of good things going on. Let's just keep it that way. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Asnik. Go ahead. I'd like to follow what Mr. Asnik said on that. It was some good presentations tonight. I'm glad to hear the good news about attendance. I do believe that competition breeds success in a lot of ways. Glad to have the choir here tonight. They were great. Hate we had a little technical issues, but maybe we'll have them back next month and do another Beatles song for us. Great news for the CTE instructors, so proud of them, so proud of that award. And those are just such important programs. Lunchbox 276 presentation, that's such a great program. We're very, very fortunate to have that in our area. And some of the things that are going on with anti-bullying, it was great to hear tonight. A lot of great ideas. I really, really liked the idea about having trick or treat at school, which I guess that plays into a couple of different things. It plays in with attendance as well. That's, I think it's a very good idea. Like some of the slogans, I think the one on the video, it was be a buddy, not a bully. That was catchy. And learn today, lead tomorrow. So I think those are some really good things that are happening. And I was also very happy to hear the good news about the security grant and the I Teach program. I think that's going to be an excellent program and appreciate all the work that's been done on those.
You took most of them. I'll just touch on a couple here real quick that Mr. Hackney didn't mention, but let's once again, like to welcome Cohen to our board as our first ever student board member. I know Cohen personally and I know he'll do a great job. I think we couldn't have picked anybody better for these first four months. And looking forward to hearing what he's got to tell me at church on Sunday. Welcome, Cohen. Also like to welcome Ms. Music back and Ms. Jones. That'll just give me something else to text and call and aggravate you about. So she's, she's used to that though. Glad to hear that our volleyball team, Mr. Owens, did you say they're one in the region or is that, so we'll host that, I guess, after districts? Right, awesome. That's volleyball keeps rolling. That's another good thing. I'll talk about the Lunchbox 276. I think the lady said they're up to 1,141 bags now. That's incredible. That's a good program. You know, that feeds a lot of children and I'm glad to hear that we're up to that kind of number and that they're doing the work that they're doing. Also the bullying prevention work that the principals and the schools are doing. Mr. Hackney mentioned one slogan that he saw and I mentioned one that I saw, the little sign that they were holding up said, "In our pack, everybody belongs." And I thought that was pretty appropriate and for the bullying prevention month and you know, it's a good lesson in life. I really enjoyed seeing that, that sign. The work on the absenteeism, especially the chronic absenteeism, I think that's heading in the right direction. That's good news. And the final thing I'll say, and I'll leave Mr. Owens a few things to talk about, but Mr. Compton, what time Friday is the one going to be done at here? Do you know? I might come up and watch that. I want to see the organizational skills for that right there. I want to get up in the press box and watch that from the bird eye view. Now, that's some great ideas to get these kids involved and that's, that's another thing that'll help with absenteeism is they know they can participate in that and go outside and get on the field and be part of that. That's awesome. So a lot of good stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Vanover. Ms. Mullins?
Well, you guys did a good job covering everything. I'll just try to reiterate a few. The Ridgeview Choir was great, did a good job. And really happy to see the volleyball team and football team doing as well as they are. And all the work on the attendance, I know that's been a lot of hard work, but everybody's been real successful with that. Makes our school a better place. And some history, as Mr. Vanover stated, we have the first school board member here tonight to celebrate that, Mr. Cohen Powers. And when he came in the door a minute ago, I told him, I said, "If you do decide to speak, the first thing you could tell him is what a good board that y'all work in," you know? So I got a laugh out of Cohen. And I like that philosophy, learn today and lead tomorrow also. And I'd like to say how well that each one of you principals worked together. And we see the successes and we couldn't have better principals in this school. And the leadership characteristics that you all portray is phenomenal. And I want to thank each one of you for that. And the dedication on the bullying is, I think, paying off. It's been, it's been a great thing and we are just a blessed school and a blessed community.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. And we say the best for us, Mr. Cohen Powers.
I just want to say thank you all for this opportunity to letting me, for letting me come here. I can't wait to see where this heads. Like he told me to say, it's an honor to work with this school board and Superintendent Robinson. And just all the good news was awesome to hear. It's great to see my peers that I go to school with do all these amazing things. So it's really nice that we get to hear about it and yeah.
Thank you, Cohen. Now's the time of the meeting when we go into closed session. Closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711, paragraph A of the Code of Virginia, there will be a closed session for the purpose of employment issues relating to discussion or consideration of specific individuals for employment as a pre-K through six teacher, interventionist, full-time custodian, part-time custodian, part-time aides, substitutes, coaches, FMLA resignations pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2-3711. Student early graduation requests pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2-3711. And to consult with legal counsel regarding the investment of public funds associated with school construction and consultation regarding actual or probable litigation, along with consultation regarding specific matters requiring legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2-71 and the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed.
Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now out of closed session. Ms. Robinson, could you read the certification?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Dixon County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Dixon County School Board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge only the public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard discussed or considered. Would you please certify?
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
Mr. Raznick, we have just certified. Would you certify after, uh, would you certify after closed session, sir?
I will.
Just, just by stating I certify.
I certify.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any motions from closed session?
Yes, I approve the early graduation of student number 1813 and employment as presented in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion's approved. Is there any other business to discuss? There ain't none, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?